Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Sylvia?
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Is Counselor King present, Mayor?
He is not. He said that he would return shortly.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Kiper?
Here.
Counselor Brousse?
Here.
Thank you.
So we have our amended agenda. The next item is the approval of the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda once more, so I thought that I would do it here and now as opposed to doing it beforehand. Under consent agenda, item G, Resolution 2015-63, a resolution removing Commissioner James Copper from the Planning Commission. Mr. Copper tendered his resignation and said that he was planning on moving outside of the city limits, and so I would like to accept his resignation and move that we remove that consent agenda item.
I second.
All in favor?
And aren't we amending new business as well? Resolution? Under one motion?
No, I'm doing two motions.
Okay.
In case someone has a problem with one motion and not a problem with another motion. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The Second Amendment is under new business, item C, administrative overhead. That new business, I would like to move to the front of the line, and so that will be A, and it will just move B and C. A will become B, B will become C. That is the motion that I make.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I move we adopt the amended agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Under consent, A, approval of June 9, 2015, City Council Meeting minutes; B, approval of June 16, 2015, City Council Meeting minutes; C, Resolution 2015-058, amending the existing contract with Murray Smith &amp; Associates to include sanitary fee and system development charge rate study as part of the sanitary sewer master plan update; D, Resolution 2015-059, amending the existing contract with Murray Smith &amp; Associates to include stormwater fee and system development charge rate study as part of the stormwater master plan update; E, Resolution 2015-060, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Blackline Incorporated for the 2015 Slurry Seal Program; F, Resolution 2015-061, authorizing the city manager to surplus equipment to the city of Battleground, Washington. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Our first presentation is a proclamation, Robin Hood Festival Weekend, July 17th, 18th, 2015, and I have that proclamation. So, this is a Sherwood tradition, Robin Hood Festival, and I see someone from Robin Hood Festival. Did you wish to come forward, or do you want me to just read the proclamation? Okay?
I have a citizen comment from Sandy.
Okay, all right, and so we'll hear that under citizen comment. All right, thank you, Sandy. All right, so I will read the proclamation. This is an absolutely wonderful community event that Sherwood would be not the same without. So, I just, I appreciate the Robin Hood Festival Association, and I want to read the proclamation. Sherwood Robin Hood Festival, 2015, July 17th and 18th, 2015. Whereas since 1946, the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival has been a longstanding tradition in the city of Sherwood, and whereas the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Committee is made up entirely of volunteers from the community who have willingly given countless hours to make this a memorable and successful event for the community, and whereas the 17th and 18th of July have been set aside for the Sherwood Robin Hood Festival. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chrisanna Clark, Mayor of the city of Sherwood, do hereby proclaim July 17th, 18th, 2015 as Sherwood Robin Hood Festival Weekend in the city of Sherwood and call upon all our citizens and the surrounding communities to participate fully in all of the festival ceremonies, activities, and events. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sherwood, Oregon to be affixed this 7th day of July, 2015. Thank you. Our second presentation, Police Officer Swearing in Ceremony, Chief Grove.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Officer Tim Teft to come and join me up here. And I want to, excuse me. Officer Teft and I were just, as earlier was the mayor, we're just at Roses for our tipicop event this evening, which is going wonderfully, and so we ducked out to come here, and then we're gonna duck back out to go back and be there. But Officer Teft comes to us from the Cedar Rapids Police Department, Iowa, where he served for four years as a police officer before he and his wife relocated to Oregon, and he began his time with us here on June 1st, and he filled an existing vacant position that we had when an officer we had previously hired decided to move to a department closer to where he lived. So Officer Teft has filled that position for us. So, it is our honor and pleasure tonight to soar him in as our custom. So, do you go ahead and stand right over there? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Timothy Teft?
I, Timothy Teft.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon?
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sherwood?
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sherwood.
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department?
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially?
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer.
During my continuance therein?
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. All right, very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping back and coming to our council meeting, and I know you're gonna return and serve some dishes and
That's right.
Clean up some tables. The next item is Eagle Scout recognition. The Eagle Scout was unable to make it tonight, and so we are gonna move that to another night so that he can come. He really wanted to present his project for us, and we look forward to those, so I'm just going to pass over that one and we'll put it on another time. D, recognition of Sherwood High School students' academic and athletic achievements. Again, this goes to me. Wow, it's, this is an event. I am so excited that you are all here today, and I know that many of you are here for your high school students. I welcome you, and I thank you for coming tonight. The city has 103 Sherwood High School students to recognize for academic, band, and athletic achievements for the 2014-15 school year. The council will be stepping down to personally congratulate the students. The city manager, Joe Gall, will announce the names of those that have RSVP'd, and when you hear your name, please come forward to receive your certificate of achievement. If there are students in the audience that did not RSVP, no worries, we have all of the certificates prepared. Just come forward after the city manager, Gall, has completed the list and give him your name, and we would love to recognize you and thank you for coming. The city council is scheduled to recognize the remaining students on August 4th. We broke it up because it is a pretty big group, and the cramp in my hand from signing all of those awesome certificates, and I'm not complaining, I'm congratulating, proves it. So, I very much thank you for coming. And congratulations to all of our bright and talented students. Do not feel obligated to stay for the council business meeting, and please enjoy the refreshments in the lobby, but I welcome you to stay if you would like, 'cause we are super interesting. So, just saying. Just saying. Okay, so come on down, counsel.
Which one? Okay, well, the first two are banned, so. Okay, I apologize ahead of time because some of the names on these certificates I'm probably not gonna do correctly, so if I get it wrong, I do apologize. So, our first two students we're gonna recognize are actually for band. So, the first person placed first at the state trombone solo contest, and his name is William Karceski. William, are you here?
Yeah. I'll stop for a photo if you want it. Your call.
Our second member that also won first place at the state in the French horn solo contest is Brian Swihart. Brian?
The remaining certificates are all students that achieved a 4.0 GPA this past school year. So, is anyone here in attendance that didn't RSVP? Because we have lots of certificates yet, so. Okay, I think we're done, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and so we will move on to Presentation E, Washington County Public Safety and Library Levies. Joe Gall?
Well, I'll do a very quick introduction while our guests are coming up. We're gonna hear from two different county officials on two different levies that are gonna be on the ballot this November. I know they have been making the rounds to different cities throughout June and now here in July. So, Sheriff, I don't know who's gonna go first. I'll let you guys
Ladies first?
Arm wrestle, so.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor Clark, council members, it's our pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for carving out just a few minutes for us to summarize some of the great information really about the 2015 Public Safety Local Option Levy renewal and the library replacement levy that will be on our ballots in November. We're gonna start with the summary of those services, and then we're gonna close with the cost to continue those services, and I get to go first as, on the public safety side. And I would just start by saying that you have an excellent police department here. It is my pleasure to work with Chief Grove and your leadership, as it is a pleasure for our deputies to work with your officers, shoulder to shoulder every day. And I recently learned, just today in fact, they bus a mean table.
They do. They do.
I was just, I just caught, I just caught a little bit of KGW of the chief and Mayor Clark there at Roses earlier, so you guys, you guys did a great job. The Public Safety Local Option Levy was first approved in 2000, and it has been continuously renewed ever since. It's important to remember that services funded by that levy are provided to every community and every public safety agency in the county. So whether you live in the city, or in the urban unincorporated area, or in our rural communities, the levy funds services that are provided everywhere. As far as what the levy would pay for, it first would pay for special teams. And when I say special teams, I mean teams like the Crisis Negotiations Unit, the Countywide Drug Team, the Countywide Interagency Gang Enforcement Team, our Tactical Negotiations Team, which I know this past year worked a pretty challenging problem in your city. Whenever, whenever a police department, no matter where they're at in the county needs help, these teams are gonna come, come running. The Crash Accident Reconstruction Team, when there's a traffic accident with a criminal element, they reconstruct to put those pieces back together, and then our Mental Health Response Team. The Public Safety Levy provides about 16% of all justice services in the county, a significant proportion of those services. And they're core services so that your local city public safety services can be best supported. For example, it ensures that when your police officer makes an arrest, takes somebody to jail, that they, that we have the best chance to keep them in custody so that they're not released early due to overcrowding. This levy funds a housing unit in our jail, so we have a fully staffed jail because of this, of this levy. I'm on Slide 4, if that's helpful. Victims Assistance and Prosecution Service, oh, there we go. So I won't read that. You're, you're, you're very, can read very well. So, best chance that, folks are not gonna be released early from jail. Best chance that the DA's office is gonna be able to prosecute folks because it provides enough lawyers to fulfill that function. And when they get to release back into the community, it provides probation officers with wraparound services to give them the best chance of folks transitioning out of custody into the community to be successful, so they don't end up back in custody later. One area I'd like to highlight also is our juvenile justice services. With the help of services funded by the levy, juvenile crime has actually declined for the last five years. Not only has it declined, but it's declined by 20, almost 25% during that time, in spite of, as you well know, rapid growth continuing to happen here in the county. Another area of service involves our Mental Health Response Team. This levy helps support that team, which includes deputies and mental health clinicians to help make sure people in crisis get the medical help they need instead of landing in jail. Nearly all of the team's over 3,000 medical health calls last year involved medical solutions, like getting individuals just immediate medical or psychological care as opposed to the more traditional police response that we have used over the years, so that they, you know, don't wind up in custody. A note about the chart, huge jump in 2014. This levy gave us the flexibility to double our Mental Health Response Team capacity. We staffed a second team on the road, and so those are basically the same kinds of calls coming in, but we're responding to them in a different, better way, actually. I'll hand it off to Director Calcano, but just to say, I'm a huge supporter of libraries and the library levy because we know that libraries are important to public safety and community health.
Thank you, sir. She's doing so well. You're hired. Good evening, folks, and thank you for giving us a few minutes on your agenda today. Like public safety is a partnership between the county and cities and other providers, library service in this county is also a partnership between Washington County, nine cities, and two nonprofit associations to provide public library service. And in this partnership, the county does three things, with the primary funding source for public library operations, and about, on average, about 64% of public library operating budgets are county dollars. And actually, Sherwood is spot on at 64%. We provide support services to our member libraries to allow them to work together, things like internet access, shared library catalog, program support, other kinds of things, and we provide outreach to special populations, and that primarily is mail delivery of materials to people who are homebound. And that allows our member libraries then to focus on direct patron service, and that they do very well. The current expiring levy is about one-third of WC CLS funding. The other two-thirds comes from the county's general fund. The proposed levy, I want to highlight some of the services that the levy would support, and that includes first and foremost maintaining our member library operations and hours. It would allow our libraries to avoid cuts in service over the next five-year period, and some of our libraries would be adding open hours for the public during that time period. It would also add basic operational support for new and expanded library outlets that we know are planned for this window of time. That would include the addition of Aloha Community Library as a member library, and provide additional support for the Cornelius Public Library, which is expanding, the Bethany Branch of Cedar Mill, which is planned for expansion, and two possible new branches in the Hillsborough area as that city develops out into South Hillsborough and Amber Glen. The levy also would allow us to strengthen our support for children's reading programs, and in 2014, we had over 280,000 child visits at public libraries or programs. That includes both children who come to the library to attend programs and children who are visited through outreach efforts to schools, to childcare centers, to migrant camps, and other areas. We want to go to where the children are to provide services. It includes early literacy support, which is, which are programs designed to, for children before their school age, so that we prepare them to be ready to read and ready to learn when they enter school. It includes programs for school-aged children, including our annual summer reading program, which is a bridge between the academic years, so children continue to read and retain their academic skills. And the levy is planned to increase our options for supporting students with school and online homework assistance, knowing that children who are home and after school and need to do homework need a way to electronically reach out and get the research information they need, the support they need for algebra, or history, or whatever that science project is. It also obviously supports lifelong learning. Learning doesn't end after high school. You just saw some excellent examples of students and their path, I'm sure, is not ending at this point, and that many of us either retool for new careers, new jobs, we look for new skills. We have people who are entering the workforce for the first time or entering again, and libraries support those efforts as well. The levy would also allow our libraries to maintain their library collections, books and other materials that are shared between our libraries and available to all residents, and to increase our support for ebook and eaudiobook, e-collections, which is the portion of the collection use that's growing the most rapidly. And maintain the central support and outreach programs that link our libraries together. Examples of those include the shared library catalog, internet access for our libraries, free public Wi-Fi at libraries, subscriptions to ebooks, and research databases, summer reading support, courier deliveries between our libraries. Our outreach programs include mail delivery to people who are homebound or live in a residential care facility, outreach to Spanish-speaking residents, and outreach to children in care. The levy would also allow us to continue to implement changes to increase efficiencies, and some, and examples of those would be an expansion of our courier warehouse so we can do more sorting of materials as they go in transit between libraries, and perhaps provide some off-site storage for our libraries as their shelves fill up. Now for the dollars and cents piece for both of these levies. For the library levy, as I said, the current levy is one-third of the WC CLS budget. The proposed levy would be a five-year levy beginning in July of 2016. The current levy expires June of 2016. It would be a rate of 22 cents per 1,000 of assessed value. That's an increase of 5 cents over the current levy rate. The first-year cost for an average assessed value home in Washington County would be about $56 a year, about $5 a month. The cost of the increase is about $14 per year for the average homeowner over what they would, would be paying over the current levy.
The public safety rate is unchanged going into this renewal at 42 cents per thousand. Pretty modest for, to represent 16% of the entire justice system in the county.
Happy to answer questions?
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
We're taking them with us.
Thank you for coming, and I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about your Mental Health Response Team that just got a big award this year, because I think that's a pretty fantastic and program that is growing and really serving, and of course, this levy would be making that expand even more. So could you speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. The Vision Action Network is a, is a nonprofit that focuses on collaborative works, public, private partnerships, that serves our community's most vulnerable populations, homeless folks, people that are food deprived or in those straits. And so it's an absolute honor for both the Washington County Mental Health Services and the Sheriff's Office, who came together really to pilot a, kind of a new way for us to respond to folks who are in mental health crisis or sometime, some type of crisis tied to mental health. And I honestly believe it has prevented otherwise very negative outcomes, because we slow things down in a way we didn't used to, and it's countywide. They're going from mental health call to mental health call to mental, mental health call, and if it's not a crisis, they're just checking in on folks that, they know we're in the community and are kind of living on the edge, make sure that they have housing, food, to the extent that we can make sure that they're med compliant, medications compliant, that helps, that helps everybody. So, thank you, Mayor. They did get recognized with the Cameron Award, an annual award to support and recognize collaborative, kind of innovative partnerships, and they are supported by this levy. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for that. What really struck me about that program that I thought was pretty amazing was that the Mental Health Response Team actually rides with the county officers, and so many of the calls that would normally be responded to just by police that really aren't police calls, but really are mental health crises, can then be dealt with in the appropriate manner, as opposed to in an inappropriate manner that might have other outcomes.
Right, right. They are mental health masters, social workers, clinicians, very smart people. They happen to all be female, and they wear a protective vest, a bulletproof vest. They are fearless. I mean, they are, they do great, great work. It's a great partnership. I would just say too, as the elected official here and can advocate, it's so important for elected community leaders like yourself to endorse a renewal and a replacement effort like this, and so we may come back with an opportunity for you to do that. And I just, I just thank you for your time, your work here in Sherwood, and for giving us a chance to talk a bit about this as well.
Now, I actually have a follow-up question. How many of these mental health professionals do you have on your teams? Do they ride out with the officers on a regular basis, or are they called to a situation?
No, they, they ride seven days a week from noon to about 10:00 PM. That's the, that's the, kind of the peak of those kinds of calls. And yeah, the deputy drives, clinicians there the whole time, and the mental health director gives them a bad time, because when they have a group meeting, they all sit, the deputy sits on the left and the clinician sits on the right, just like they're in a car. We have about seven teams. We put two on the road at any given time, so we have kind of some backup teams when ones
Fabulous program.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a follow-up question too. We have the
We had the privilege of having the Washington County Suicide Prevention Director come speak to us as a city, and we were the first ones that had requested her services of just educating us.
Yeah.
And our city manager has been following up with trying to have some more knowledge, learning sessions for various people. But my question is, does this levy fund any of that position, or does that come from a different source of funds used to support that director?
Right. The director is not funded by this particular levy, like the clinicians are.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to compliment him on the dog show he had a couple weeks ago.
Oh.
And I know it's not a part of this, but that was...
Right, right.
The canine dogs, that was great.
Right, that, yeah, everybody loves...
Well-attended, too.
Yeah, well, he was well-attended.
First year I've ever done it.
Thank you for being there.
Sure.
Your dog won, right?
You know what? I think one of, yes, I think you're right.
I think. Mate, perhaps.
Pretty fierce dog.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Presentation F., 124th Avenue Extension Project Overview. Russ Knobal, Washington County.
And as Russ is coming up, I'm going to call Brad in from the back, because I was able to get that other thing queued up, but I can't get it off.
Oh, heavens.
My screen is blank. I don't see what you guys see, so...
It's part of our plan, that you can only learn about lawyers and physics.
And just to stall a little bit, I just wanted to remind the council, as well as the public, that the council was having a work session on the Tonkin Employment Area, where we discussed a lot of sort of development potential within that area, and the topic of 124th kept coming up. And while not directly related to that project, we realized that it was really time for the council to get an update on that, that project. And so Russ is here to give you that update. So, just arrow.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Once again, Russ Knobal, I'm a principal engineer for Washington County. Came here to talk about the 124th project, and then, as part of that project, the Basalt Creek Extension, Basalt Creek Parkway Extension, and they're kind of tied together, and I'll show how that goes. Up on the map, you'll see there, the stuff that's in bold, yellow, that's all part of the 124th project that I'll be talking about tonight. So you see improvements extending 124th, you see Tonquin Road improvements, you see the brand-new Basalt Creek Parkway, and you see improvements on Graham's Ferry Road. The piece that shows up in purple up there is what we're referring to as the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And that would be taking the Basalt Creek Parkway from Graham's Ferry on over to Boone's Ferry. That particular Basalt Creek Parkway came out of numerous studies, way back, West Side Bypass, then the I-599W study. The I-599W study talked about a southern arterial. Out of that study came the concept of building a portion of that southern arterial at this point in time, and then in the future, looking to link that southern arterial on over to 99W somewhere in your city or south of your city there. So that's how those tie together. Go ahead, Julie. So, real quick, because everybody's always interested in funding, the project's pretty close to being bid, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but cost is at $30 million right now. That money comes from the Mistip 3C measure, and also from Mistip 3D and a couple different categories. The first category that was approved by the Washington County Coordinating Committee and the Board of Commissioners was $12 million for the 124th project. Then there was an additional $11 million set aside for improvements in the Basalt Creek Improvement Area. And there was another study that recently completed out there that talked about the Transportation Refinement Plan, that talked about the roads over in that Basalt Creek Planning Area, which is your cities to the west, to the east of here, in Twalton and Wilsonville. So that's where the funding for that project comes from. One of the other major parts of this project is, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, but is the Willamette Water Supply Program. They will be putting their pipeline in this stretch of 124th, also in Tonquin, and also in Graham's Ferry Road. Their cost adding to this project is close to another $20 to $25 million. So it's going to be a rather large project, a lot of construction activity over the next three years out in that area. So the other piece that I showed up there is the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension. That piece, even though it was really small compared to the rest, is a very large bridge. It's about a 600-to-700-foot-long bridge. It's a really deep canyon from, in between Graham's Ferry and Boone's Ferry. It's very surprising, because you don't see it from either one of those roads, but if you are to get out there and walk, it drops way down in, and is a very large canyon, and is part of the Missoula floods. If you guys have ever studied the geology, they came down through that area and carved that. So we're just kicking off kind of an environmental slash preliminary design effort on that. So Mistip 3D, out of that 11 million that was approved in the Basalt Creek area, 1 million was taken out of that, along with regnable, regional flexible funds that are awarded from the federal government through Metro. And I think some of you might have been following that process. That was about two years ago that those funds were awarded there. And then, of course, you know, you see 3.2 million, so of course, we're going to need some more money in the future. And those sources could be from the federal government, they could be from the Mistip Program, TDT, or some type of local SDC that may come out of the Basalt Creek Concept Planning Study that they're doing out there now. Go ahead, Julie. So just to highlight the 124th project, as I talked about, it's an extension of 124th from basically Twalton Sherwood Road down to Tonquin, and then the new Basalt Creek Parkway that goes from Tonquin over to Graham's Ferry. What you'll see out there is kind of an interim. It's in our transportation plan, it's a five-lane arterial. We will build a two-to-three-lane interim cross-section, with the understanding that as that area develops, the development community will build out the rest of that full five-lane cross-section. What we are doing, though, is we're building the walls and bridges out there to full five-lane width, because those are the expensive pieces of any project, and development tends to not widen bridges, move walls, so we're getting that all in place at this point in time. Tonquin and Graham's Ferry will also be improved, and that project got expanded to do that because of the water line. The water line's going to be in both of those roads, and so you can imagine a six-foot diameter pipe takes about a 12-foot wide trench. Those roads are about 22 feet wide right now, so pretty much the entire road is being destroyed by putting in this pipe, so that it will be rebuilt. Three-lane cross-section, you'll see either wide shoulders built out there, which I'll talk about here in a minute, or some type of bike facilities, and intermittent sidewalks. Sidewalks will be left out where future development's coming in to infill those. The project will also rebuild that Tonquin and Graham's Ferry intersection. Any of you that ever go that way know, you know, there's a large dip down there, the rock trucks tend to cut the corner, and you feel a little squeeze there. God save you if you're on a bike, because that's even more crazy, yeah. So the, that's another positive portion of the project. We'll have an improved rail crossing on Tonquin itself, so you've also, if you've gone down Tonquin, you've hit that rail crossing, and if you're not holding onto your coffee really good, or whatever you have drinking at the time. And then, the new Basalt Creek Parkway will actually be an overcrossing, a bridge over the railroad tracks, so there won't be any at-grade crossing there to deal with. One of the other things that's been added is realigning the curves on Tonquin, right in front of Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue Facility. We end up hearing about accidents there roughly every two weeks. It's amazing how many accidents are out there. Some reason, people are coming down there 50 miles an hour, 55, 60 miles an hour, they don't see that first curve. It's somewhat gradual, but it really sneaks up on people, and they end up rolling down the hill into the wetlands there. So the one saving grace is the fire station is right there, and it's a training session for everybody, so... But that will be another nice safety improvement out there. Improved site distance, that would be one of them, and we're going to take some of those rock outcroppings down and stuff, so you have a lot better site distance on Tonquin, and then also leveling out Graham's Ferry, because it does this kind of motion through there. And I talked about 60, 7-foot-wide shoulders to accommodate bikes on 124th and on these other roads, until development occurs to build the full bike lanes and sidewalk improvements out there. Go ahead. So the schedule, we're currently purchasing right-of-way. It's about, I think we have about 90 Denver files out there, so 90 Denver lots that we're purchasing. Not necessarily 90 different ownership groups, because Tiger Sand and Gravel owns about 12 Denver properties, Knife River owns about 14 Denver properties, so you can imagine those are larger-type areas. We're hoping to bid the project, actually, we're pretty sure we're going to bid the project August 2015, so, you know, that's coming up here in a couple of months. If that's the case, you would see work starting out there about September, fall of this year. The way that project is scheduled to build out is 124th would be built first, along with the Basalt Creek Parkway. Once that was built and opened to traffic, hopefully by the end of December 2016, Tonquin Road would be closed to traffic, and traffic would be deterred onto the new Basalt Creek Parkway. The reason to close Tonquin is because of that major water line that's going down the middle of that, and that intersection, raising that intersection about 12 feet, the intersection of Tonquin and Graham's Ferry is going to, is almost impossible to keep Tonquin Road open. Now, we will have to deal with that on Graham's Ferry, we will have to try to build that under construction, or under traffic, I should say, so... So that January to December 17th, 2017, is going to be quite a bit of activity out there on those two roads, so... And then the project completion would be June 2018. Go ahead, Julia. So, a little bit about the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension. It's part of that East-West Alternative. I didn't fully talk about that, but the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan was an effort of Metro, Washington County, ODOT, Twalton, and the City of Wilsonville to identify transportation networks in that Basalt Creek Concept Planning Area that they were looking at. The East-West Alternative was this alternative that was selected, and so this Basalt Creek Parkway is following that alternative. It'll extend the new Basalt Creek Parkway that we're building as a portion of 124th, it'll extend that from Graham's Ferry on over to Boone's Ferry, which you saw as the purple piece on there. We expect to get going fall of this year on environmental work. Two years through that effort, starting final design in October 2017, and then, basically at that point, starting to look for additional funds. If those additional funds are available, the soonest we could start construction would be 2019, and then that would wrap up by 2022. I think that's it. Yeah, okay. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Counsel, questions? South Hennings?
On a previous, excuse me, on a previous screen, did you say you're putting a light in at Tonkin and Graham's Ferry?
There will be a light at the Basalt Creek Parkway in Graham's Ferry. There will not be a light at Tonquin and Graham's Ferry at this point in time. The way the traffic shifts, it'll shift over the Basalt Creek Parkway, so there won't be, there's not warrants at the Graham's Ferry-Tonquin intersection at this point in time. Now, as that area builds out, there's a chance that then that signal does get warranted, and you end up with a signal there. But, you know, really, even coming from Sherwood, if you're coming through that area, you're probably going to be better off to jump onto the Parkway and come over to that signal there, and stay off of Tonquin from here on out.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I see that, no, it stops at Day Road. Is there any coordination with, I guess, Blackamis County to repave Day Road? If you've traveled on that road, you know why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, and I do, I go down there a lot. And I will tell you, you know, through the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Study, Wilsonville had a lot of concerns about Day Road, and it was a, it definitely does need improvements. There was a lot of conversation about whether that stays as a three-lane road or becomes a five-lane road. And the recent TSP that Wilsonville did, that's going to become a five-lane road, so you will see a rebuild of that road sometime in the future. It is not funded at this point in time. Wilsonville prefers concrete roads, especially in that location. So Washington County just completed last year the Boone's Ferry Road project, and we built the additional turn lane there from Boone's Ferry turning on to Day, the two lanes. We built that in concrete to set that up for that whole road being reconstructed in concrete. And then, as part of their plan, too, they're going to extend Kinsman, if you're familiar with that, on up to Day Road. So that's all part of that redevelopment in that area, too.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Okay. So when Tonquin Road is shut down, what's that going to do with the entry to the TVFNR site?
Well, they're going to be just to the west of the Basalt Creek Parkway. So they will be able to quickly respond by getting onto the Basalt Creek Parkway. Anything along Tonquin Road, which should be limited, because there's just not a lot on Tonquin Road in that area, they would still be allowed onto Tonquin Road to respond to that. But luckily, their location is just going to be just outside the closure, so they're going to be able to quickly hit the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension, or Parkway portion.
Any other questions?
So I had, I just wanted a clarification piece, so that you can please explain to our public. So as you are tearing the road up, and you're putting in this large pipe, are you doing that to utilize economies of scale, since you're going to be redoing the roadway anyway? This is a good opportunity for you to dig the trench a little bit larger and put this water pipe in that we are going to need for future?
Yeah, you heard the sheriff talk before me about partnerships, and I think this was a great partnership that came along halfway through this project, and we really had to put some pressure on Twalton Valley Water District. They weren't quite ready to catch up with us, but they realized, in their, in their analysis, $75 million they're saving by putting this pipe in 124th along with this project. So it's a great partnership, not only for us, because we don't necessarily want to see them coming back out and tearing up a brand-new road, but also for their ratepayers to take advantage of that economy and scale also. And, like I said, they actually did bring money to the table to allow us to widen Tonquin and Graham's Ferry Road and rebuild those. We would not have done that had that not been them coming to the table. Kind of off the topic, but we're also working with them as this project leaves the 124th and Twalton Sherwood Road area, and works its way on up into the northern part of Washington County, along with other roads that we plan to improve along the way. So it's going to be a continued partnership for probably the next 10, 15 years.
Great.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And our new business, administrative overhead. Julie Blooms.
So the mayor asked me to put together a presentation on administrative overhead, what it is, why we charge it, do other cities do this? This is a question that came out of the budget process this year from our budget committee, so I put this together, and we will walk through it. So the first thing is, what is administrative overhead? Basically, administrative overhead is something that is charged to pay for your admin staff, your HR department, your IT department, your finance department, payroll, accounts payable, legal services, facility maintenance. You, you get, you get economies of scale, this gentleman just said that, too, by having centralized administrative services. You can have a smaller group of people doing the same amount of work, so it's cheaper than having each department have to hire their payroll person, HR person, and IT person. And the way that works is that those costs are all put together at the end of, for us at the end of the month, and we allocate those out to all the different funds and departments that use our services, essentially. So this is why we charge it, because it is more cost-effective, we can have a smaller number of staff, it's more efficient. If we had to have finance people in every department trying to put together a budget every year, or our financial statements, if we had to have Brad in every department, it would get very expensive. So many, many cities have centralized services, many private businesses have centralized services for that very reason. have centralized services for that very reason. So, this one's going to make your head spin, and I apologize. The question was asked about water, specifically our water fund, and how that overhead is calculated. The overhead rate for administration is calculated the same way for every department, every fund, every capital project that we have. But I use the water fund as our example here. So I'll walk you through this. I've had to walk every staff person through this today, so I'm getting pretty good at it. First, we start with what the total personal services costs are for the water fund, and that is $660,000, roughly rounded numbers off this year, out of the budget. So we start there, and you divide that by the total of non-administrative personal services costs citywide. So all personal services that aren't for admin staff, because that's what we're trying to allocate. And you get a rate. It happens to be 7.8% for the water fund. Then you multiply that times the total administrative costs, and this is, this example is for the entire year, and that equals $288,600. And then we add in our direct fleet costs. So these are costs for fuel, new equipment, if we need to buy a new water truck. Those are direct costs that we try to charge directly to the water department because we can identify that those are direct costs. And that comes out to what the admin overhead charge is. It's the same exact formula, regardless of what fund. Basically, that $660,000 number is what changes, and then whatever the direct fleet cost is, fund by fund, to calculate what that overhead charge is. And that, again, that pays for city recorder, city manager, assistant city manager, HR, finance, IT, our legal department, which is part of the reason that number is higher this year than it was last year, because we brought legal in-house, and so it's going to be allocated through overhead versus direct charging, which we could do when we were contracting that service, because they could write on every bill, this is a water thing, this is... But when you bring it in-house, it's going to roll through the admin overhead, that, through that way. So you'll see that the legal costs will go down, but the overhead went up. Does this make sense?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. So you have an HR issue in the water administration. You have an employee who's not coming to work, or whatever the case is. Rather than hiring a water employee HR person to sit in there and manage those situations, we use our city HR person.
Yes.
And that's what this fund is covering?
Yes.
Because you might only use them four times a year versus having to pay them to be there full-time.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
And this cost comes out to be, at least for the water fund, it's about 5% of total expenditures in the water fund for the year. I did have a little bit of time to talk to a couple cities, just to give you a sample of who else does this. Pretty much everybody does this. If you Google administrative overhead, you will get a pile of information, because everybody does it, public, private, industry, because you get such savings by having it centralized. So I want you guys to know, we're not alone. We're not doing something different or odd. Every city calculates it a little different. They all have different models. This is our model. We've had it. It's been here since before I was here. It is something, I talked about this during the Budget Committee meetings, that once our finance system in, it's kind of my next big project is to work on a cost allocation model, so that we can better refine some of these charges and get a more sophisticated system than what we have now. And so when I talk to some of these other cities, that they, they're already there. They have some of those more sophisticated cities. With that, there's some trade-offs. They have to do all of their numbers based on budget. They, you can't do them on actual. We do ours on actual. So what we put in the budget is just based on what we've budgeted, but every month we charge what the actual rates are for the month. The other thing is, when I talked to the Finance Director in Tuolton, he said to update his model each year just for the inputs takes him three, four hours, just to update the inputs, to be able to churn a number out. So there are some trade-offs. Ours is simplistic, but it's pretty easy to use. But I think, moving forward, I would like to see us do something more sophisticated, and it is on the project list to do. But these are the cities that I was able to confirm with, that they do charge administrative overhead.
Are there questions about that?
Can we go back to the slide with all the departments?
That one?
So, just for my own clarification, and maybe I'm not the only one who feels this, but, so in lieu of hiring all of these people and paying them out of the water fund, we're basically borrowing them from the city and just paying the city for them?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have a question on that. And then I want to read to the public, because I asked a series of questions and asked that you be prepared for it, but you did answer them, and so I want to make sure that everyone gets to hear the question and the answer, so that we're kind of all hearing the same things and everybody is understanding all the things that are asked and all the answers that have been given. When you're talking about, when we were talking about the employees that were working on water, so say when Craig goes out and works on water, you had said that during our budget meetings, that Craig is his, the portion of the time that he has worked on water, that income that he makes at that time for the 1.7 hours that he worked on water, is paid out of the water fund?
Yes.
Is that what you are calling administrative overhead, or is it an additional charge?
It is additional. So the people who direct charge can do that because they are specifically working on a water project, water maintenance or sanitary maintenance. So they can directly attribute their time to a fund. So they direct charge. What these are, these are the costs that aren't directly attributable to any specific fund. They are general administrative costs that have to be allocated out. So that's the difference.
Okay, so I'd like to read mine before you ask additional questions. I'd like to put all the questions out there so that everybody has the questions that have already been asked and answered, and then I will absolutely come right back to you.
Absolutely.
So my first question was, what is the amount paid last year from the water fund to the general fund on overhead charges? And your answer, sorry, this is printed in kind of a very strange way, was the approximate amount that the water fund will pay to the general fund for fiscal year 14, 15 is $276,000. We've not completed year-end processing, so the actual final number may be slightly different. I wanted the projected, that's fine. That's what I wanted. What do the other neighboring communities of Wilsonville, Tiger, Tuolton, Bearden, charge their water funds on overhead charges? You had wrote in your presentation that they all charge it, but you couldn't give me the numbers that you would be working on that?
Yes.
That they're all different. What's the percentage that we charge?
Our, our charge for the water fund is, it comes out to be about 5% of total expenditures. It'll be different for every fund.
So no, that's not my question. My question is, I think you're answering a different question than I'm asking. So are you saying that the administrative overhead costs, you charge 5% from the water to the, that goes back to the general? Is that correct?
Hmm.
What is it that, where is the 5% coming from?
The total cost of administrative charges in the water fund are 5% of the total expenditures in that fund.
Okay, okay. And then my last question was, what is the amount projected to be collected from the citizens of Sherwood next year as a result of the 4% rate increase passed at the last council meeting? And your answer was, we are projecting an increase of approximately $350,000 in water revenue for fiscal year 15, 16. This increase is due to all of the charges made to water rates, 4% increase and change to irrigation rates, as well as taking into account for the growth and changes in consumption. So there's a little flexibility in the $350,000 number. Okay, and that's next year's number, as opposed to the $276,000 was last year's number? Is that correct?
The 276 was last year's admin charge.
Correct. Right, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Okay, so the 276, last year's 350, 4% increase on water.
Is the, the increase in revenue.
Right, expected. Thank you. So I will go to you for your question.
Oh, sure. Well, it's just a clarifying. So for instance, I work with an engineering company. We have accountants, we have people that answer the phones, admin staff, and I work on projects. So if I have a project, I know what I'm charging to, but the folks that are doing my billing for me or answering the phones don't charge that time to my project. They have to charge something somewhere so that my company can afford to pay them. So therefore, there is a 6%, our company uses 6% on all overhead charges that get charged to my project and every other project that goes out, to recoup the time and the pay of paying the overhead. Is that similar to what's going on here?
Exactly.
For every fund that we have in Sherwood. Okay, thanks.
So I wanted to go back to our minutes from our last meeting on page 14, when we were discussing the 4% increase in the water rate.
13.
No. On the top of page 14, Mayor Clark said, and we are talking about the 4% increase.
Yes.
Mayor Clark said, "This money is specifically allocated for those water needs." Julie replied, "Yes." Mayor Clark said, "This money does not go into any general fund." Julie replied, "No." Mayor Clark said, "This money does not fund the employment of any individual in the city." Julie replied, "Water employees that are part of the operating system." Mayor Clark asked, "Who would be a water employee?" Craig Sheldon replied, "There's a small percentage of his time, a small percentage of the utility manager's time, and the meter reader, and a couple of maintenance people." Craig said that we might get some crossover for people that are actually working in water if we have a main break or any leaks. Mayor said, "Each one of these employees being paid under this fund are specifically addressing water needs and water issues in the city." Craig and Julie replied, "Yes." I do not think that that answer aligns with what I'm hearing tonight, and that is concerning to me. When I made my vote, it was my understanding, the money collected from our citizens would pay for water, not employees. And that is why I asked those questions, and that is why I got that answer, and the answer was no. So that changes my feeling about my vote, and that concerns me. I would have liked to have known that there was this administrative overhead which paid for employees. When the water is being serviced by employees, I understand that we should be paying those employees under the water fund. I do not believe personally that we should be paying administrative overhead. I think that that should be paid by the general fund. That's what the general fund is for, in my opinion. I am open to other comments, but that has been my assessment. I did not feel that I received the correct answers to the direct questions that I asked.
Well, and I'll follow up with that in that also, if you look at the minutes, it states on page 13, that Council President Robinson asked, "What if we don't increase the rates on water consumption?" And Julie replied, "There are several options. There are some capital projects that could not be done. Eventually, we will consume our fund balance, and we will be out of compliance for our debt, which can affect our credit rating in the future." She said, "We don't have enough money to cover our fixed costs for operating the system," followed by Mayor Clark asking, "Where does the 4% go?" Julie said, "It goes into Water Operations Fund to pay for maintenance debt, and some of it will pay for a small portion of capital projects, not eligible for SDC funding." So I have to say that I am really upset that counsel was not advised of the background for the water rate increase. And I, I very strongly opposed a water rate increase. I oppose it today even more, because the rate increase is about the same as the overhead charge to this fund. And I don't think our citizens appreciate that they are having to pay more money to pay for an administrative staff person. And not only are they paying for an administrative staff person at about a 5% cost, they may or may not utilize that person in HR. You may not get any services from HR for the water fund that year. So you're paying more money on a water rate increase is just very disturbing to me, and I don't think that was made known to counsel, and I'm very upset about it. So much so, that I'd like to make a motion. And that motion is that I move that the city manager draft and return to us a resolution that takes away the water increase and reestablishes the old rate. Okay, well, I would like to add a few things here. There's a lot more information that is out there that we have not discussed in terms of really, truly understanding what a 4% administrative cost really is. 4% of a total water fund is not going to be the same as 4% of total overhead charges. Okay, this is, if you have 4% of a million dollars, it's going to be a lot more than 4% of $200,000, which might be allocated to a water fund or any other fund. So when we're talking percentages here, we need to figure out percentages of what. I'm not for amending anything. I think this is knee-jerk. I think we need to reevaluate and discuss. If we need another work session to do that, then I suggest we do that. But I am not for making any kind of motions or amendments to do something that is just off the cuff after there has been some discussion on that. I'm just not for that.
I will second Sally's motion, but I am more concerned, because I feel that they do equate. I feel that the numbers have aligned, but I'm actually more concerned about the practice of administrative overhead, because the two appear to, as in everything, it is a budget. So it is a balancing of a budget. If you remove the administrative overhead from the water budget, not from everything, because there are checks and balances in different areas of the city, but if we remove the administrative overhead from the water, that would remove the necessity for a 4% increase. So my motion is that we remove the administrative overhead from our water budget.
So...
Yes, it is a separate motion.
So, so...
We've got to deal with it one at a time.
So Mayor, we need to deal with the first motion and the second. Vote on that one, see where that goes, and then another motion can be made.
Okay. I would, I'd like to make a comment to Council President Robinson. I feel that my motion should be addressed before your motion. So are you willing to withdraw your motion from the table?
I can withdraw the motion after your, your motion.
Okay, so do you effectively withdraw your motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'll second the withdrawal. So my motion now, that is on the table, is to remove the administrative overhead from being charged to our waterfront, which takes the water fund money and places it into the general budget.
I have a question. So then, if we do that, how do all these get paid? Do we hire employees then from, and just have them come in on a temporary basis to cover the IT services?
No, they are paid, they are already paid by the general fund. The people who work, the employees from the city who work from the city and work on the water specifically, will still be paid. That's not an administrative overhead. They will still be paid from the water fund for their services on the water fund. I'm against the practice of utilizing administrative overhead, which I think is a fancy word for slush fund, that pays for employees who should already be paid under our general budget.
So Mayor, are you stating that that applies to all the other departments too?
No, I am specifically talking about water budget only. This is...
Why would it be, why not the other funds?
Because the water budget is a budget that is, that we talked about, the budget itself... The budget itself is a pie. The water budget is its own piece of the pie, and I do not feel that in the water budget situation, that we should be taking from that piece of the pie and paying for over, overhead charges from the general budget.
So, but aren't there other pieces of the pie that do the same thing?
Yes.
So in my opinion, if we do it to, one, we have to do it to all of them.
I disagree.
Cause what's another piece of the pie?
The sanitary fund.
The sanitary fund.
Storm fund.
They have an overhead that we pay.
Enterprise funds, our utilities.
I'm just trying to understand how it would be different, or why it would be different.
Well, I think the biggest thing for me is that our water rates are not commensurate with our neighbors. Our water rates are dramatically higher than our neighbors, and I think that this administrative overhead is a piece of that reason why our costs are so high. And I think that by taking away the administrative overhead and leaving the water budget be just the water budget, that it will no longer have to grow to build on what should be paid for by administration.
Um, just a quick question, Mayor. So if this money is supposed to stay in the general fund and be allocated from the general fund, originally, in the original plan, if the money is coming out of the water fund, going back to the general fund, you would, there would be extra money, wouldn't there?
So.
I mean, I'm just kinda doing the math here.
Right, so, so, and that's excellent, a very good point. Um, so, what would happen is, the water fund instead of being depleted, would remain taking care of what we, our needs are, and we would no longer need a 4% increase, because they are almost identical numbers, give or take, because they're projected in some ways. One is, one is last year's number, one is next year's number of two different things.
Can I, can I add a question? If, if we do this, we will leave a hole in the general fund of $300,000. We will need to cut something, or some things, out of the general fund budget to make that up.
Right, and you can bring that forward to us.
I would look for recommendations from council of what you would like to do that, to, to do that with, cause that's a lot of money to try to.
And that's a significant amount of money. That would be people.
Yeah. Out of $49 million budget, I.
It would be people.
I have trouble believing that, but.
I think we oughta have further discussion on it.
Agreed.
I think we need further discussion.
And I need, uh, for me, the way that I understand these things is with real, real-life situations, not real life, but for me to work it out of my head, I have to say, "Okay, so you have a facilities person, and they work generally with the council and, or with, for the city, but they have to go do something for the water." Now, he's getting his salary, for instance, no matter what he does. He shows up and he does his work and he gets his salary. And then, he, but some of that took place for the water fund. So he's getting his salary, which is, I think, what you're saying.
Right.
So then for the water fund to pay into the general fund, again, it's not like he's getting a bonus for going to the water. That just goes into the general fund, and that's part of what pays his salary.
Yes. It, it goes into the general fund, but it doesn't necessarily go straight to his salary. It, it gets allocated within the general fund.
I think when they calculate the general fund, they're counting on X amount of dollars being billed to these different, um, pools of money, and that's how they bill their budget. I don't think that, I don't think the $300,000 is just sitting there in the general fund.
To pay these water issues.
Right, it's a bill.
Pay the water issues.
Yeah, I think it's a.
Except the 4%, we just added that amount. So we're billed, we're already adding.
So we're seeing.
So that's what I'm saying.
I know, I, I get that.
That's what I'm saying.
I think.
So I'm not creating a hole, I'm actually repairing what I think is a practice that I don't agree with.
And because, but if we don't have that $350,000, then the facilities guy isn't able to go do the water fund cleanup that he has to do. Is that what I'm getting?
Yes, he is, because he's paid under the general fund to do it.
But that's part of the $350,000.
Right, I'm not taking money away. What, what we're doing is, I feel that the administrative overhead.
I'm confused. Aren't we taking $350,000 out of the general fund?
Well, yes.
I think I need a little more.
I think we need to discuss a little bit more. I think we need to get everything out on the table and really, really drill down and understand it, and I think with more discussion, we'll have a, a lot better idea of where to go. My chief concern is that we're setting a precedent for all these other funds. Tiger, Twalatin, Wilsonville, and all these other cities can't, can't be wrong. I mean, they're, it's, I mean, I'm sure they do it everywhere, so I would like to be able to have a work session discussion at the, at, you know, at the least.
I do feel like it's kind of new information that we, maybe not all of us understood. So, I think, I mean, I clearly am not understanding it the same way that you are, so.
Nor am I.
I need to see it.
Yeah.
I do have a question, though. May I, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, I believe you said in one of your comments that it's based on actuals. So if you've got a budgeted amount, but the actuals are less, what happens?
We charge less.
Okay, so it's all based on actuals?
But then where does that money go?
If, if the charges in the general fund for administration staff is smaller, then we don't need to collect as much and allocate as much cost to the other funds, so the charge to the other funds would go down.
So for instance, 350 is your amount that you think is?
305 is.
305,000?
Yes, is the estimated.
So that's your estimated, say it comes in at 250, say it comes in 300, whatever. Um, where that other five just never gets put into the general fund?
Correct, because it wasn't charged there to begin with.
Cause it's a percent of the actual. It's just a percent of the actuals.
So if we have vacancies in the, in the administration division, someone leaves, we don't replace them for two, three months, that means our expenses in administration are gonna go down, so the actual charge to the other funds will go down, because there's not as much cost for them to pay.
And then, my other question, if you go back to the two, actually, two and a half paragraphs that, um, Mayor Clark was referring to and Council Robinson on page 13 and 14, would your response, how, what would your responses be knowing what is being brought up now?
I, I, there was no intent to mislead, I will tell you that right now. I, I, I think of overhead as just a normal part of how the budgets work, and it's just part of a normal cost we allocate in there. So, I, I, my intent was not to mislead you. Um, I don't think of it as paying for employees, because it's not just employees, it's supplies, it's training, it's, um, it pays for conferences, um, it pays for council to go to conferences. So, I just, I guess I just don't think of it the same way, and so that was why I responded the way I did. It was no intent to, to mislead or, at all.
Well, the difference being to the, to the water fund is that it was the only department that we ask the pub, we are asking the public to increase their fees for, and that's, that's a problem for me. I don't, I don't disagree with administrative cost allocations. Um, they may be part of every budget in every city worldwide, I don't know, but I don't think it's appropriate to, when the numbers are very close together, I don't think it's appropriate to make the public pay for administrative overhead as a general cost allocation when on top of that, we're billing to the water fund for certain individuals. If we want to not have a water rate increase and include those costs, my position would be different, but I think that making it a rate increase to fund that particular thing, in my mind, is just wrong.
I agree, I agree, and, um, I, I do not hear a second to my motion, so I will.
We'll all second the motion.
Okay, to remove the administrative overhead from the water fund.
Yes.
Okay? Any more discussion?
I feel like I need more information before I can.
I do too.
Make a.
Kate, there's a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails?
Nay.
Any other motion?
Well, I'll renew my motion that the, um, city manager return to us at the next meeting for consideration a resolution that takes away the increase in the water rate increase, or consumption rate of 4%, and we can have a, another further discussion about it when we consider that resolution. But I'd like that motion, um, I'd like to be presented with that resolution next meeting.
Second.
Well, I have a question. Has that not been billed yet? And if it has, and people have paid it, do we then repay them?
No, we would just be, we would just.
We'd take it for the one month and not.
Well, we would be discuss, her motion is not to remove the increase. Her motion is to bring it back to council to discuss.
And remove, then.
Well, it's, it's for him to write it up.
Yeah, I would assume if I bring that resolution back, and that resolution is adopted by the majority, we would then figure out, okay, what are we gonna do about what's been paid? So we can deal with that.
But this vote would not change that in any way. This vote is only directing him to bring the item back to council.
Before work session, we have to discuss this about even whether or not we need a resolution of such?
Would you clarify your motion, Sally?
That's the motion, so.
My motion is to bring it back to council, and, um, as part of the adoption of a resolution, we have a discussion. So, that's what my motion was intended to do.
I did, I said, and I second that motion. Any discussion?
Question.
Sure.
So if you bring back a resolution eliminating the water rate increase, and that has consequences on the budget we adopted, when and how do we adjust that?
Then we would discuss that at that meeting. We would discuss the, the implications of it.
And so what is the direction to staff? To come up with 100 different ways to cut $300,000 out of a 48-plus million dollar budget?
No, because the 4% has, was not, was adopted after the budget. The budget was already adopted, the 4% is a increase, and so it is in addition to the budget that was adopted.
Right, but, but Julie.
The overhead charge was budgeted.
Correct, that's not what she's at. That's not what her motion is. Her motion is on the 4% increase, which was made after the adoption of the budget. So it would.
Simply to re, to reverse the 4% and reduce the revenue.
Correct.
That's correct.
To be brought forward to us, not for that to occur, but for it to be brought before council again, as Councilor Kuiper brought up to discuss, to have another work session on this, because this issue was not brought up before, and, um, to have another discussion about it, and, um, to have a resolution written. Is that correct, Sally? That is what I heard.
Yeah.
So it would not, it would not be a direct action, it would be a request to bring it, right, to bring it forward as, no, an action item that will be discussed.
Okay, at the next council meeting?
Correct.
Before a work session?
No, we, we, it will be a work session as well. We can have a work session on it as well. That, the, the information will be presented in the resolution.
So the resolution is to get more informa, to take away the 4% increase for now, get more information and vote on it again?
No.
I, I think the, I, I got the motion pretty clearly.
Okay, okay.
Tell us what it is.
I mean, the way.
I understand, I understand it just fine.
Sylvia, correct me, but my understanding is that the motion was, um, to remove, to bring back a resolution that would remove the 4% increase. Basically, for a discussion at the council meeting and action, possible action, we could have a work session the same night ahead of time for more information, but that's the motion. We would bring that resolution back, and you would ultimately vote, you would vote as a council on that resolution at the next meeting.
Right, and as Mayor, I, I make the agenda, and I'm more than happy, Councilor Kuiper, to have a work session on the same night before.
I get it.
I, I understand that. I, I don't like the idea of having a work session and then immediately a resolution afterwards to say yea or nay as something as important as this. I feel this is extremely important, and I think that there needs to be some thoughtful, thorough discussion, and I would rather see a work session, and then, if in fact the decision is made, to go with the resolution, do that at the next session. I don't like the idea of this boom, 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 because I personally need time to assimilate and to make sure that everyone else on council is getting what I'm getting.
And there is a work session scheduled this month and not another council meeting until the 4th, so feasibly, that could happen for you.
Yeah, I could place it on that one. I'm, I'm happy to do that. I'm, I'm happy to put the work session wherever it's more comfortable. Yeah, cause our next council meeting is not until after our already scheduled work session, which would not be an action item. So there is a motion on the table, and a second, is there any other clarification needed or questions or comments?
So just, just for clarification purpose, what would be the cons of this coming back before, if that 4% is eliminated?
I can't see of any cons of talking about something.
Yeah, it's talking about it.
It's talking about something.
It doesn't change what's already gone through.
It doesn't change, no, it does not change anything.
It just allows us more opportunity to talk about it and figure out how we.
Correct.
Really understand it and feel about it.
Exactly. Okay.
Do we plan to take public comment on this resolution?
I'd be happy to take public comment. Yeah, I mean, I take public.
They can even comment now, there's a form in the back.
Yeah, there's a form in the back, they can comment now. Yes, that's more, yeah, I mean, it's, there's public comment at every council meeting.
Right, but I don't think the resolution that's on the table clarifies what happens if we don't have a water increase.
I think we will talk about that in the work session.
Which the public doesn't get to comment on.
But they get to attend, and then they can comment.
And then they can comment at the public comment time.
But you have to understand that public comment is after the business.
And can I, so the formal action, if, if we have the work session and the consensus out of the work session is that, yes, you wanna move forward and, and remove the 4%, that is an adjustment to the fee schedule, which requires a public hearing.
Okay.
And then, the actual adjustment to the budget requires a supplemental budget, which requires.
Another hearing.
Another hearing. So, we, we can have.
We will have the correct order for public to have their comment.
We, we can't, unless we public notice, because some of those actions require different public notice than what Sylvia has to do. It, it would be better if we did the work session on the 21st and then.
Figure it out.
Did action at the next meeting if need be.
Right.
Which would help.
Is that?
Yes.
Work, okay.
Okay, vote.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Resolution 2015-062, IGA between the City of Sherwood and the Urban Renewal Agency for the Center for the Arts Building Financial and Operational Responsibilities. Tom Pesmire.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, uh, this resolution, um, has been put together to kind of, um, deal with some idiosyncrasies that we have relative to the construction of the Center for the Arts. At the urban renewal meeting, there'll be a similar, um, item on the agenda that basically mirrors this, which has to be, uh, adopted by, um, both agencies. So, just a quick reminder, um, the City of Sherwood and the Sherwood Urban Renewal Agency are actually separate entities, that's why we have separate meetings, and, um, there's a separate board, even though it's made of the, of the same people. And so, um, there is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Sherwood and the Urban Renewal, Renewal Agency, and, um, that IGA was really meant to cover a lot of the different things that happen, um, with similar employees or similar type of, um, actions that are happening, where there could be, um, some overlap between the two agencies. And in this particular situation, um, the Center for the Arts Building is, um, partially constructed, yeah, but not fully constructed. So, uh, at this point in time, the Urban Renewal Agency owns the property, the Urban Renewal Agency built the building, Urban Renewal Agency owns the building, but the City of Sherwood is actually operating, um, portions of the building. There's still the retail area, which, um, has not been leased yet, um, and there are improvements that need to be made in there, um, with Urban Renewal Agency monies. So, we've kind of ended up with the situation where it's not a clean transfer a lot of times on our projects between the Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Sherwood. The project finishes, the project's transferred from one agency to the other, everything's clean. In this particular case, um, there's just multiple things going on because of timing. So it's really a timing question more than anything. And so this intergovernmental agency, uh, agreement is really just to kind of clarify what the different responsibilities are between the city and the Urban Renewal Agency, who's operating what, who's gonna be, um, paying for, uh, the tenant improvements inside the space, as well as, you know, who's going to be, um, negotiating lease contracts and that kind of thing. So, it's, it's fairly straightforward, um, but it's really just meant to be there so there isn't any questions as to which agency is doing what.
Thank you, Tom. Council questions? Motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2015-062.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Council discussion, initiative petition, request to place on ballot. So, I have, um, Bill Middleton? Come on forward.
Well, former Mayor Middleton is coming up. There is a brief staff report.
Okay. I didn't see a name on there, so.
That explains how we got here and some options for you as a council after Mr. Middleton has a chance to present his idea to you, so.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That will be you, Joe?
No, he can, I was going to have him come up and explain.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to remind the council.
Mayor Middleton, come on up. Yeah, he's gonna, he said he's gonna give it while you're here, so come on up.
Bill Middleton, 22567 Southwest Saunders Drive through and solve all your problems, okay?
Welcome, Mayor. No, you gotta push the, until it turns green. Okay, thank you, sir.
What we're trying to do is get an initiative on the ballot, a charter amendment on the ballot, that would limit the amount of increases every year of our fees, only ones obviously paid by the city. And right now, we run, everybody knows what the fees are that we have. We have, let's see, stormwater charge from City of Sherwood, sewer consumption charge City of Sherwood, sewer base charge City of Sherwood, sidewalk repair fee, streetlight fee, street maintenance fee, safe sidewalks fee. And then we also have some other taxes, franchise taxes that go up when they're up for negotiation for the contract. So what we'd like, and water, obviously. So we would like to get on the ballot, and we started gathering signatures, and in, in three weeks, we got 400 signatures, and 92% of the people signed. We went to their house. So rather than us to continue out there and getting signatures, we'd like to have the council put this on as a charter amendment so that every year, the city can increase the water rates 2%. So you, as a homeowner, know how much you're going to be paying every year. You're going to get a 2% charge. That's probably the, almost every year, because last year, we didn't have an increase. So this year, we have 4%. So if we didn't do, do last year and do this year, it would have been the same thing. Our general fund budget's gone up almost 30% in three years. So obviously, we have some money that can be reduced, and this would actually help the taxpayer themselves. I know everybody, especially on the council, when you ran, part of the issues were, our taxes are too high. Well, we can't do a whole lot about property taxes. Those are set. We're not going to change those. But we, as the citizens, should have the option of at least voting on any kind of increase we want to do, like on the sidewalk fees or anything like that. More than 2%, 2% can be added as an escalator every year. And then that way, people can kind of budget for it. I don't know anybody that got a 10% raise this year, but the city budget went up almost 10%. Last year was even higher, and we still didn't get more raises. And I see that MoTIA Insurance is talking about a 20% increase in healthcare costs. That's what the state's allocated that they can do. Everything's going up, but at least we could save a small portion to our taxpayers and say, hey, this is the part we can save you money on. We can actually say, yeah, your water rate's going to go up, has to, because everything goes up, but it's going to go up 2%. And if you, if you have some big catastrophic issue, you can always bring it to a vote. We had a, the police department was built by the vote of the public. It was not, no urban renewal or anything. It was built because we voted it in. Back in 97, we actually had a issue on the ballot to support for more police department. We got a levy. So anybody, if, if we really want to bust, you know, like, say we need 10 more police officers, put it on the ballot, let the public decide. I mean, you're elected to give input, input on the minute scale, but on the bigger scale, it's, you're all part of the public too. And this is the only part we can really put an effect on. And I think it would make the public feel good saying, hey, they care about us. They're not going to raise everything constantly. They know they have increases. 2% on anything is, is about what the cost of living usually is, or 1% or whatever it is. I know we got 1% from Social Security this year, 1% from the Army. So not everybody gets all this. And this way, you can kind of budget where things are going to go. And this way, you guys would just, the council could put on their, an amendment or say that we're going to put the charter amendment on the next general election, so we don't have to do special elections. I think the next general's when, May?
November.
November? This year?
Yeah.
So that's, you know, but I, I don't want to be a killjoy, but I don't think it'd be good to go on this year unless you made it for the next budget, because you're already having trouble with the 4% and all that. It would really be a mess if it passed in November, unless it went into effect in July. You know what I'm saying? Because you already got the budget set. If we say November, everything goes up 2%, can only go up 2%, then you're going to have to be forced into going back and removing the $350,000, whatever it is. But if, if it went on the budget in, in July, I know the city could come back easily. If they can have a 10% increase in budget, I don't know how much all the fees and all that bring in, but it's sure not very much. But water bills go up 2% a year. I could live with that. But if it goes up 6, 8, 10, 12, people's income aren't, they're not going up like that. And I think in the long run, it would catch up. The other cities would end up catching up to us if we limited it to, because we've had, our water rates have gone up since 2005, 158%. So that's quite a rise, you know, and, and it's, it's hard for people that aren't making a bunch of money out there or are retired, so. And we have all the fees in, I don't know, none of the fees went up this year, did they? The street fees and all that? Or did they go up? See, so none of that went up, but it could still go up 2%. They just couldn't add any new stuff on there, because I know that Tigard's talking of adding one new fee, and so is Hillsborough. But they're not, if it's a fee, you don't have to go out for a vote. But this would give the, the public the opportunity to say, hey, yeah, we like that. We'll, we'll vote for it and get it in there. So that's, that's what we're trying to work for, and we'd just like the council to put it on for the next, put it on in November. Well, I, I would say put it on next year in May. Is May the next one after that? When it's a presidential year? May, because I think everybody's kind of sick and tired of elections right now personally. You know, I mean, it seems like we have one every week, so. But that, that's, you know, and, and Chris Wiley and I wrote this. She's the old recorder here, so if you have any questions, you could ask me on it, because I.
I have several questions, Bill.
Oh, several, go ahead.
The language, according to our staff report, says that any increase in tax charge or fee garnered from taxes, charges, fees imposed shall not be effective unless ratified by a majority of the city's qualified voters, where at least 50% cast a ballot. And I can't remember a time when 50% of the eligible voters, I think it's up to 10,000 now, voted.
I'd be willing to have you take that out, because I saw that too, and eh, never going to happen, especially if it's something we really want. You know, say we want to build a new, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
Park or something, and we need the money, and we got to go out to a, or a rec district, say something like that. We'd never get the 50%. So you could adjust, you can make amendments to it, to that, and I wouldn't, I, I don't think that'd be a big issue. It would only, but it still would be required to have, you know, an awful elections you still have to have by the state law.
Well, we, we pass our budgets in June, so this initiative would require us to wait July, August, September, October, November, five months to basically do what we need to do for the fiscal year.
I can guarantee you it's going to pass. So I mean, that you would make, base your budget, knowing that you'd have, maybe you could do two budgets. The city could come up with one, that people don't pass this, and then one that they do pass. It's only going to really affect your water very much anyway. It's only a 2% change on the water.
I, I doubt that. We have a stormwater update being done currently, a new plan. We have a street master plan being updated too, so I anticipate that those are coming down the road.
Right.
What if we have a catastrophic failure? And we have to spend $2 million on the reservoir? What if it leaked?
Then you have, that's what you have your funds for. That's why you have a, a budget every year. You can, there's other allocated money out there. We have a reserve fund and everything else.
Yeah, but I think you would bankrupt the city to make that repair and wait.
But one thing, it's, it probably has insurance on it if it's, if it's something like that.
Right, well.
But another thing is, okay, you're saying, and this is just a, a question back to you, yeah, we do these master plans, so we're going to have to increase everything, like 45% here, 45. You think that public's going to tolerate this much longer? I mean, we've got to start bringing our budget back to real, you know, the real world. 30% in three years is crazy.
And I, I agree with the concern, and I have those concerns. I obviously don't want the water rate increase. That's very clear. But I don't think the average voter.
Can we keep our comments to the mic? Thank you, go ahead.
I don't think our average voter will take the time to review what needs to be reviewed in order to make an educated decision on the tax, whatever tax or fee that may be imposed, it might be over 2%. If you knew the amount of time that we spent going through Planning Commission to get to this updated water master plan, and, I mean, there was at least four sessions that I went to, and then public hearings, both at Planning Commission and City Council, I don't think the average voter is going to be that educated in what we actually need to do.
And I agree. I mean, I wouldn't have a clue how, about where all of our water, I mean, I was with the general population with our water bill. Mine, I mean, it doubled in one month when we went from Toallington Valley to Sherwood, so. But after sitting through hours and hours of presentations to understand where we started back when this started in 2005, there's no way, as an average citizen, you would be able to have the time. I mean, I don't have the time to do it now, but I make a little bit more concession for it. But I don't know how they would be educated enough to, I mean, they don't, I think most people just, they're so financially focused because of budgets, and, I mean, my husband just got laid off from Intel. So money is a big deal in my family right now. And I think it would be hard to educate the public to the level that some of us get educated to, to make these decisions. And then I also wonder about, why do you need a council if you're going to send everything to the voters?
We aren't sending everything to the voters. We're sending one thing, but one thing that I think you have to look at too is 30% budget increase in three years. Maybe the city could look within itself and say, we're going to save the taxpayers a little and not have everything, you know, they come to you and ask for stuff. It shouldn't be that way all the time. It should be, yeah, we understand, we don't have all this money. But if it's coming, this is coming directly on the back of the citizens, the water budget. It's coming directly out of us. So you're saying it's okay that the city takes the 10% and increases the budget everywhere, and then we can raise fees on the public, rather than trying to save fees on the public, save a little money in the budget and be giving back to the people? What you're doing now is you're allowing the city to write the ticket and say, okay, we need this, 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 and this, and we're going to raise the water rates, and we're going to do this. We're going to get the signatures.
Well, a couple of things I'd like to, just to mention. 30% increase from the city.
In three years of the general fund.
And there's been a 50% increase in population over probably eight. So there is, there is some equivalent expansion of the city budget that is somewhat equivalent to the growth of our city.
280 people in the last two years doesn't allocate 30%, so.
And then my second point is, my concern is those costs that the city cannot control, fees that are, that the city itself is subjected to, that might be more than 2%.
Can't vote on those. That has nothing to bear on this.
But the city has to afford, for instance, PERS.
Maybe they should be saving right now a little.
These, those kinds of things are going to have to be addressed in some way. And I'm not saying that that would be passed on to the, the taxpayer, but I'm just saying that there are other things out there that the city itself is going to have to address internal with its budget. And my concern is 2% being bound by 2% by vote is going to, you know, hoodwink the city and strap them.
But that has nothing to do, that, you're, I think that we're going a little off the subject here. This is only on these fees on the back that you pay on your water bill. It has nothing to do with PERS. We should be saving now for PERS, because we know we're going to get hit. We should be saving now for health, because we know we're going to get hit. But we don't. And the, the problem is the taxpayer sees everything increasing constantly. Why should we, as a taxpayer, why should I have to raise my sidewalk fees for PERS? Or why should I have, this is strictly these fees we have on here. It has nothing to do. That's why the city should have a five-year budget, so they know what's going on. I mean, we're living on a cliff right now, because we don't know what's going to happen with health. We don't know what's going to happen with PERS. But we do know that we don't need to raise the fee. These, there wasn't even these fees at all 10 years ago, or however many years, when I moved here. We didn't have all these sidewalk fees. We, and these are just strictly these little fees that solely are put on the taxpayer. Nothing else. It's, it's not saying that we can't vote on raising 20% on whatever you want to do for the, I mean, we raise, we charge more for the place over there or whatever, you know, to rent out these things. It has nothing to do with that. This is solely taxpayer fees. I am subsidizing the increase in the budget, because the city doesn't want to look and say, we really should be saving now. No other city has raised their budget as much as we have in the last three years. And if you can say that's because of the earlier growth, it's not. Because we kept pace with everything all the way along. We only, we had a couple of bad years. Now, if you look in our reserve, I mean, some of the projects, like last year, we had to have the parks funded by a grant, which was great. She, they got a grant for that. Why did we need to do that? We should have taken it out of, I mean, that should have had enough money in the city to pay for that, but it's going out somewhere else, we don't know. We added six new employees. Really? I mean, this, is this the time to be doing this? Then you're talking PERS, more PERS, talking health, more health. I'm just thinking, we got to start thinking of us, the taxpayers, for a change. Let us decide if, you know, and I, I'd kind of take a little offense when you say, well, we sat down and listened to this, and, and, you know, the other people don't have the big ballpark picture. A lot of them.
I didn't have the other ballpark picture until I did it.
Well, a lot of people do, and the ballpark picture to you guys is being given to you by staff. So, you know, there may be a little bit of.
I was going to say, we have to trust.
There's one other thing that's being left out here. The fact is, we went through a bubble, tax collection went down, yet this city has not only come from a certain size reserve fund, we have a, a very good size now, coming out of the bubble. And I think staff has done a good job in managing that crisis, because we're in a much better position than most cities in the state.
Then this should be a no-brainer. Then we should be able to easily have the voters, just, all I'm saying is just these little fees that, that really irritate the people, and it wouldn't have much.
It sounds to me that you're limiting your initiative to the city fees that are charged on the City of Sherwood bills that go out.
Except if it's from Clean Water Services. I mean, we can't have anything to do with that.
Well, I was just going to say, on, included in all those bills are all these rates that we approve as an increase, because it's passed on.
We don't.
Through sewer, stormwater.
Choice.
Yeah, we don't have a choice in that.
Right.
And that's more than 2%, I can tell you, every year.
We pay right now in city fees 25, right around, say, $26 in city fees. And then if you look at, at Clean Water Services, it's about $43. We don't have any choice on that. There's absolutely nothing that can be done on that. This only affects these little fees on the back here and water rates at 2%. If you come back, if you have a catastrophic issue, if you take out the double majority, people will vote on it, and if they think they need it, fine. And council really has to listen to the public. And, and if we're getting a 92% positive on this, I mean, I think that the water rates could go, they could go up 2%, like you were already talking about. If you do it 2% every year, that's reasonable. If I get hit with a 15, what are you going to do if you get, I mean, the city said, well, we need 25% water increase? You're just going to pay for it? No, you, you'd have to look within the other parts of the budget and maybe trim some stuff back, but be good to the people for a change. Let us, you know, have a livable wage and be able to pay our water and all that. It's gone up so much now, I don't think more than 2% a year is going to need to go up anyway.
I, I hear you completely, and I understand, and I appreciate that we want to try and cap fees. I get that. But it's also a little, I wouldn't say offensive, but I would say disappointing to think that we, as elected officials, are not representing the city's interests. I think that we all very, take it upon ourselves to educate ourselves fully. I don't think we vote our own interests. I think we think about it, and we question our budget meetings. We questioned everything. I mean, there was a lot of discussion. our budget meetings. We questioned everything. I mean, there was a lot of discussion.
Yeah, ask Julie.
And so, you know, we spend an exorbitant amount of time going through that budget and trying to keep things low. I did throughout the process. I know the mayor did, and others. So, I'm just fearful that there's just not enough time for the average person. And quite frankly, you ask the average person whether or not they want to vote for an increase in fees, the answer will undoubtedly 90% of the time be no.
And you just said you didn't want to raise the water rates.
And I voted not to.
Yeah. So, why not let the public at least have a say in what, you know, I mean, these fees have been added, and we, as a public, they don't even know half the time when some of these are put in, or they're raised, or anything like that. So, that's all we're trying to do, is make it so it's reasonable in this city and not crazy. Because it, I mean, if, how, what did you guys cut out of the budget? What big things did we cut out of the budget? How many positions did we cut out of the budget?
What did you prefer to be cut out of the budget? That's what I want to know.
Oh, I would have cut four of the positions right away. Do we need somebody to work over there at this art center when we haven't even got it up and running? Another person over there? We don't need another policeman. This is something that you guys all, I mean, that's-
That's whether you base it on a two-car or a three-car patrol.
Oh, give me a break. You've got eight people working day shift. Why don't you put two of them on nights? You know little or nothing about it, so I'm not going to get in an argument with you on that.
Okay. Counselor Henderson, did you have something that you want? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. And I think it would be important that we maintain respectable responses back and forth. I don't think that was a respectable response. So, I would ask you-
Yeah, I don't care what you think.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Hey, I have a question for Chris. Can a ballot be retroactive, if placed on the ballot? So, as it reads here, after July 1, 2015, any ordinance resolution or order approved by a majority of council, can it be retroactive, as written?
In general, whether a resolution can be retroactive depends on the, the resolution itself. This one, I believe-
No, I meant a ballot.
A ballot, well, right, something placed on the ballot. This one could be retroactive and would place the city in the position of having to come up with a, with the funds first, and then a means of distributing them back to whoever they came from.
Okay. And then, secondly-
I'm sorry, but-
Go ahead.
For example, if you recall, measures 49 and 50 rolled property taxes back to an earlier tax year. So, yeah, they can be, these kinds of financial measures can be retroactive.
Okay, then we'll just, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, excuse me. Yep.
I'm done.
And then, my other question is, it says, fees solely or partially garnered from taxes, charges, or fees imposed on residential properties. So, I assume that this means businesses can be taxed at any rate and would have to be taxed separately. So, i.e. separate water bill, separate street fee bill, separate light bill, separate sewer bill, separate telecom, or any enterprise fund. So, we'd have to, we'd actually, we essentially have to have, create two separate billing systems, one for residential and one for non-residential. I also don't, or need help understanding what owners and/or occupants, residential properties occupied by owners and/or occupants. I don't understand what that means within the city, City of Sherwood boundaries.
So, I have, uh, okay. I had a question for you, Bill.
So did I.
Bill, I got a question.
So did I.
No, I got a question for you. Come here. So, it seems to me that there's, you're, you are circulating petition. You're getting a lot of support. So-
Already got 400. So, we're just going to go out and do it, and then we're going to make a retro.
So, it sounds to me like you, you, and, and I understand, I'm, I agree with, with Council President Robinson, and I agree with you on the fee increases, that a 2% increase is more commensurate with what people's incomes are tracking, except, of course, mine, because I'm on Social Security, just like you. So, I get one. But, that being said, I think that even you came back and said that there were parts of this-
That we could change.
That we could change and make better. And I would much rather than you go to the public with the way that it is, where even you have said, nah, you know, that's probably not correct, if maybe, would you be open to having, like, a work session on this?
No, we're just going to gather signatures. We just figure, you know, we're having such an easy time doing it that I thought-
Because you wanted to put it in May of 2016, so we've got lots of time.
Yeah.
We've got lots of time. So, let's, let's make it great. I mean, let's make it something that-
And I, I have a question too. Would you be willing to, if a motion was made, to have our city staff maybe draft the-
No.
Work with it?
No.
The words and bring it back?
I don't trust them. They, they-
You would review it. You would review it. You would be in charge of reviewing it.
Because that's something I would vote yes on.
Then, why wouldn't they take this year, when we had the surplus of funds, and start saving a little bit? No, we just glossed-
But what we were doing before is irrelevant.
No, no, we're talking about the resolution. If they drafted a resolution, you could review it. What's, what's the trust?
I got mine approved, and I've got till 2012 to get the signatures, because that's the way we're going to do it.
Makes no sense.
Can I talk?
I, I would vote yes, if I could have the, the staff take out the 50%, do the couple of things that we've talked about, fix the dates properly, bring it back. You can have a say, if you like it or don't like it, and if, if that's a resolution you'd be willing to put on the ballot. This, the way it's written, is hard to understand, in my opinion. So-
And even you admit that part of it you would take out. So, if we cleaned it up-
If we could have it cleaned up, if we could have it cleaned up and put the proper dollar amounts and the, stay with the 2%.
Timing.
But I'm still going to keep mine because I have to 2017 to get my signature.
So, yeah, that's fine. But, you, I mean, that means that if you don't like what they draft, you can continue on.
Because what I want to-
But I'm more likely to vote yes if we can make some of those changes, like the 50% issue.
Yeah, I want to see us working together on solutions. I want to see us-
Instead of just throwing up our hands and getting mad.
Instead of just throwing up our hands and saying, you know, blah. I, I would like us seeing working on solutions. And it seems like we've got a little bit of time here. We've got some changes that we kind of both agree on. So, we can work together on coming up with a great product that serves everyone and moves everything forward.
With that in mind-
We're just going to go and gather signatures. We've got a booth at the-
So, you don't want, you just want us to forget it?
No, they can come up with something. But it seemed like when I was here, it was kind of already a no.
I know, but you have a no filter going.
You do. You do. We're just discussing. You, you kind of have a no filter. But, but that's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
So, this is my, this would be my, this would be my motion. I would move to direct the staff to look this over and come up with a ballot title and information to take to the voters about an increase of 2% or more on fees goes to the voters.
And water.
On the fees that are proper, so that we can actually have a say in. Like you said, we can't do anything about what Clean Water charges us.
It's in the whole, it's in the whole thing. It sits in there. It's only for, and any outside fee, we have it.
Right. Yeah. And I don't think we have to allocate water. It would be all, across everywhere. You don't have to specifically say water because it would cover everything.
And let me clear, let me, I just want a clarification on your motion, since it's your motion, that you are giving a direction to staff to rework this from the discussion that we've had today, and then bring it back.
Yes.
Okay. That motion I will second. Any more discussion?
Neither of my three questions were answered.
Well, I just, if they rewrite it, that's where you get your answers.
That's where you get the answers.
Some of the things you addressed are some of the issues that I have. So, if we can have staff answer those questions and draft it a little less clear.
Yeah. I'm, I'm all for making it clearer.
So, my question about, this only applies to residential properties, so businesses would be taxed separately?
Yeah, and I think we should address that, absolutely. And you talked about it, and, and her motion includes everything that was talked about tonight in our discussion.
Add commercial on there would be a whole different, you'd want a whole different charter moving on that as well.
Well, and staff can, can work on that and-
Explain that also.
Explain it and come up with good language and-
I want to do residential on that. Be interested in dealing with residential.
Right, I agree.
Okay, we've got, any other discussion? I've got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
I don't-
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. I, I need the nay votes, or at least by handrails.
Yeah, I do too, because I can't see it. Okay, motion fails. All right. Thank you. Citizen comments. I have a good pile here, and I'm going to let Sally Wallace come first.
Can I say something?
Sandy, I'm so sorry. My eyes are getting blurry. And I just spoke with her this morning. How bad is that? Yes, Jennifer?
I had another death in my family, so I am going to leave because I have to drive to California pretty much right now. So, I will listen to all the citizen comment on the video, I promise.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Thank you.
Sorry for leaving.
Oh, please come to the mic, Sandy, and push, push the button until it turns green. And thank you, thank you so much for coming forward. And I did not mean to startle you into thinking that you had to speak right when I called on you. I'm, this is, this is great.
Oh, that's okay. And like, I'll reiterate, like my dad said, call me anything but late for dinner. So, I am Sandy Wallace. I'm a Sherwood resident out of city limits. And my purpose is just to bring additional awareness to the Robin Hood Festival, which you did with your proclamation tonight. And I thank you for that. It is a tradition that started in 1954. And in, excuse me, I should have taken a drink of water. Do you mind if I get it?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Somebody get her a drink of water, please. Thank you.
Guys are wearing me out. Anyway, I just wanted to bring additional awareness to the Robin Hood Festival. It is a signature event within the city, and it has continued since 1954. In 1956, the International Archery Match began, which is sponsored by the Robin Hood Festival. It's between Sherwood, Oregon, and Nottingham, England. And I just wanted to bring awareness to that, that it is something that has gone on for years, and we would like it to continue. And what we have needs for are volunteer needs. And Jennifer, thank you for coming to our meetings and recruiting volunteers. And that's one reason I'm here, is to make an emphasis that we do need volunteers to continue this function, and especially for this year. So, I brought flyers and a volunteer sign up, for all you people that are still here. And I would like to put that out if council approves that. And I'd like to thank council, the city, for supporting us, in-kind services, some financial service that you do. And I'd like to formally invite you to come to the International Archery Match, which is my passion. I've done it for 41 years, starting this year. And we spoke earlier. I have an opening ceremony, if you would like to come to that. It's on Saturday morning, the 18th, at 8:30 at Edie Ridge. And we have May Marion shoot the first arrow, and the event starts. We do the national anthems and all. And other than that, I think that's it. So, I waited all this time, but that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We love the Robin Hood Festival. So, thank you for coming forward and bringing our awareness to that, and the archery. Tony Bevel.
Tony Bevel, Southwest Lindley, Sherwood, Oregon. I'm, I'm reacting, and I know that's a bad thing to do. But I just heard, I definitely heard that Sherwood citizens were called stupid. Not that exact word, but uneducated, that basically they didn't care. I don't think that's the case. I think it's a failure of going out and really engaging the public, the voting public, the public in general, making it aware of what's going on here. A good example would be, and I think the Sherwood Gazette does a good job of that. I think there are other ways of also getting out what needs to be done. Sherwood West, they had a ice cream social, and that's one way. But I think there are other ways of going about it too, even if you have to go out in front of supermarkets and drag people by their ears and, hey, look, listen, this is important. This is important. And, oh yeah, I took some notes. Okay. Yeah. So, I don't know, this budget thing, getting back to that, I mean, it seems like to the public, and I'm including myself here, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors. There's a lot of shifting, and it's going here, it's going there, and it's going to be used this and that. And I, I think really needs to be a little bit of, what clarity in that. We're not, I'm not a economist, never got a degree in accounting, but you probably have to have a super degree in accounting to keep track of what's going on. So, I think, yeah, that, I think the 2% is a reasonable request. I think it makes your job definitely a lot harder. You're elected officials, and you're not paid to do this. But, and you've done this willingly. I mean, your feet are going to be held to the fire if a 2% limit, and that's what I'm going to call it, a 2% limit is installed. But I think it's a good thing. It's my 4%, it's my 2%. Every month, I go to the Public Works and pay that $110 for water. And as the mayor, former mayor, said, that, that's gone up a hell of a lot. It's gone up a hell of a lot. And I would like to see that there be some restraints put on how much the public can be, you know, charged. And, I mean, you are an elite group up here. You were voted in. But at the same time, the elite group doesn't know better all the time when it affects such a large other group. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Nancy Taylor.
Nancy Taylor, Lindley Way, Sherwood, Oregon, within the city limits, west side of town. Like to walk a lot. Personally, I'm insulted by what was said tonight at this meeting about citizens and their inability to make wise decisions when they have ballot issues in front of them. I look back at the time I've lived in Sherwood, and I'll tell you, I haven't seen anything fail in Sherwood that was on the ballot. The school issues have passed, the water issue passed, all bonds have passed. I don't know why. You don't think we have the capacity to vote correctly when the issue is important. There have been things I have voted yes on that I didn't even agree with. And so, I am insulted. And I hope you just take that to heart. We are the citizens. We are the people who fork over the 4% extra. We are the people who pay those bills, month after month after month. We are those people. And we're a little disgusted when we hear a budget meeting and a budget finance director, I have to do what? I have to give you weekly updates? I have to give you monthly updates? You're paid pretty good in this city. I have looked at what other people are being paid in other cities, and you are paid extremely well in this city. So, when I hear you as counselors give them kudos, they are doing their job. No more, no less. They are doing their job. They are paid a lot of money to do that job. There was a report this morning on the news that I'd like to explain to you. Oregon is rated 50, 49th among 50 states as a good place to work. And do you know why? Taxes and fees and the burden of being a worker here is amazing. Texas was rated number one, which surprised me. Washington State, number two. So, think about it the next time you want to impose a fee on me. Think about what you're doing to the working population in this state. Think about it. You're only doing a very small amount. And if you can't see in your hearts, the seven of you, to cap seven, at 2%, a very small amount of money, you're looking at maybe $36 a year per person to do this cap. And yet, you say no? I, I don't get it. I really don't get it. I, I think you're extremely educated up there, at least some of you are. And I am ashamed and insulted by you. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Mike Moranen.
Mike Moranen, 23135 Southwest Pine Street. I'm here to address the issue of parking on Pine Street. It's my understanding that the Planning Division has proposed that they're going to put no parking signs on Pine Street below the proposed dog, dog park, immediately below the staging- below the proposed dog park, immediately below the staging area for the Stage One of the Pine Street relocate or rebuild several years ago. This affects myself and most of my neighbors. When Pine Street was rebuilt, the parking on my driveway went from four vehicles to two. I now have no on-street parking, which I had before the rebuild. And putting no parking in this one small area, which is at best four or five cars, which was bumped out enough, so there was parking in that area immediately below the site for the building of the reservoir and the street remodel, makes it difficult for myself and basically all of the neighbors on Pine Street from Division Street to the end of the rebuilt site to have any place for company or extra family to come and park within a reasonable area of their residences. Thank you.
Thank you.
A quick question for you, if you don't mind. What was the reason for them eliminating the parking, do you know?
Apparently, it had to do with the dog park, I understand. The people thought there would be a problem with people parking in that parking area because it was immediately below the dog park. So that's my understanding.
Okay. I was just curious.
And so they now have signs out that says no parking?
There are no signs out at this point. But I understand it was passed by the Planning Commission. We didn't receive any notification of the immediate neighbors that this was actually done, but...
I'm not quite sure that's accurate.
Well, this news to me, so you submitted your information, your contact information. We'll talk to staff. That's not my understanding. So Julia, unless you have something that can clarify, we need to look into this, so.
Yeah, I certainly want to get back to you because I'm not fully up to speed on all of the issues. But I'm pretty sure it was not a condition, it wasn't a requirement, but it was discussed that this is going to happen because of the parking, because of the street width and what's out there now. And I believe the discussion was that there really probably should have been no parking signs there already, and they were going to do that as part of this project. But let me confirm all that and get back to the council.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll dig further into that and have somebody contact you. Thanks for coming forward. Art Claus.
Robert James Claus, 22211, Southwest Pacific Highway. I'm going to tell you, I've heard things in a transactional psychological sense. I've never heard citizens called stupid before. I mean, that is amazing. Now, I'll admit, some of the people we lick here make us look stupid, but I don't think we're stupid. Now, the second thing I want to talk about is I'm affected. A number of years ago, I had the privilege of going after an account, a national account for a big company. And we went to Jerry De La Fina. Jerry De La Fina is fairly famous in boutique advertising. And I love the remark he made, because some Japanese businessmen were pushing on him, and he got tired of it. And they said, "What do you think the theme should be?" And he said, "For your company, from those wonderful people it gave us, Pearl Harbor." Now, I'm going to tell you something. Nine years, Reed versus Gilbert was going forward. This man over here, Chris De Cream, told us that that sign code that was passed, and Pat Allen said was constitutional. It was a joke. It wasn't constitutional, it wasn't that. You knew it right to begin with, because immediately he pulled flatback and built billboard permits. That's how we got the billboards. They challenged the code. They didn't build them on the code, they challenged the code. Reed Gilbert. For nine years, we've been sitting here with an absolute content-based code that's straight physical violation. Isn't that maybe this was the ninth? The ninth did everything they could to stop it. And Kagan, God bless her, sums it best. This code in Gilbert doesn't even meet the laugh test. And it's not as bad as the code you're operating. Let me tell you why. Because some time ago, you started, not you, luckily, this council, started making political decisions. Sell your reservation rights, as Mr. Doyle did. Go with the right politicians, change the use, and you can still enter the highway. You talked to ODOT, and you made that political decision. You then start to put in roads that create land use division in order to stop pieces of land competing against your urban renewal. That's because you wanted the money out of urban renewal. So you made a political decision to take light industrial in a secondary location and tell Walmart, and you told them they had to go there, not this council, Mays, of course. Joe Gollum started to change all of that. Gollum's working hard, so is his staff. You can go and talk to staff and do it. But until you get a staff attorney here that doesn't pull nonsense that makes our code not even meet, and this is a quote, "the laugh test", you're not going to get all of this political stuff stopped. You're going to have people trying to go direct referendum on you, the initiative petition, because they don't want to deal with the political process that goes on here. And as much as Gollum tries to stop it, any staff is coming around. Until you get a legal counselor that stops playing political games and works for the mayor, the city council, and everybody else, you're not going to stop anything. Because you're going to have more and more citizens leaving here angry because they got screwed while somebody that knew a councillor got privilege. Americans don't believe in privilege. What they believe in is the Fourteenth Amendment and all of us supposed to be treated equally. I mean, I don't even believe what's going on here. Gilbert smacks our sign code where it belongs. It's a political document. And look sometime at who got preference in that sign code and who contributed to Mays. You won't have any question, no, how that code got passed. Oh, I forgot, we had great legal counsel. The Uber crowd, they're not even liberals. They're not even liberals. They're just people who want to abuse our rights.
Thank you, Mr. Claus. Jan, I want to say Hatcher.
What?
No, I'm calling the next person.
Oh, I left you.
Yes.
The Gilbert Code, not that Chris De Cream read it and required someone to read it. Knew what the First Amendment was.
Jan? No, okay, okay. I just wanted to call out one more time because I believe that she is sight-challenged, isn't she? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that I sounded out loudly in case she was in the back somewhere. Okay. And the last one that I have is Bill Middleton. I do not see him.
I think he's left. I haven't seen him since.
I'm sorry. Where did Neil go? I did see Neil turn one in. I'm very sorry, Mr. Nano. I did see you turn it in.
I saw you turn one in, right?
Heavenly stars, I know you turned one in, so come on up. I'll find it in my papers. Oh, I was looking back and forth.
Neil Shannon, 23997, Southwest Redfern Drive. I can't say I'm appearing before you as a member of the Budget Committee because it's my understanding that my term of office expired on the 1st of July. However, I will give myself a plug and say I have reapplied for next year. I heard with a great deal of interest some of the discussion regarding the water rate increases, the administration charges, so on and so forth. And I did have a couple of comments. First of all, I think that you're applying a link to the two that should not be there. It's maybe a coincidence that it's 4% on both sides, but there is no link to those two increases. The purpose of the increase on the water rates right now, as I understand it, is a refreshment or increase in the reserve. There is, it would take a supplemental budget before you start spending that money. So any rate increases would be clearly just added to the reserve for the water fund for future expenses or just for, in case of emergencies. Basically, the concept right now is that the reserve is being spent down, and the recommendation was that there needed to be a rate increase to refresh that reserve. Now, I also think that there's been a great deal of poor discussion or poor ideas in regards to trying to control fees. The concept of trying to control fees means that we're going to not bill people for services that are being provided. If you truly, as a city council, want to control the water rates, what you need to do is be controlling the spending. Because the spending is what's driving the rate increases. So if it's necessary as part of the budget, you need to tell Craig, "Well, you're, you know, you can't replace that six-year-old truck. You're going to have to drive it for another two years." Or you're going to have to tell Craig, "We can't replace these pumps. Find a way to fix it." Or, I mean, one thought I have was the automatic meter reading system. That was a fair expense, seven-year payback. I'm not sure that I would have recommended it, but so on and so forth. So if you really want to control rate increases, control your spending. And then in regards to the administration charges, I certainly, as part of the Budget Committee and as chairman of last year's Budget Committee, would have really suggested that this was a discussion that should have been brought before the Budget Committee, rather than something that's a knee-jerk reaction by city council at some point in the future. There is going to be overhead charges. You are going to be having administration writing payroll checks, calculating taxes, putting in ads in the newspaper to hire people. And the city administration so far has decided to try and control those costs by just allocating on a percentage basis. And that's what they've done. You can clearly say that, okay, we don't want to allocate that percentage. And then what? Do you submit a bill every time you issue a paycheck and says, "Well, here's a 15-minute bill"? The other way is if you're looking at it right now of just not charging the administration fee means that the general fund is then subsidizing the water fund. And I do believe that would be a serious mistake. Anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
I found your form, so we're good. Thank you, sir. I do not see any additional public comment forms. Did I miss anyone else? Okay, thank you. City manager department report?
Nothing to report unless there's any questions for myself or staff.
Any questions, council?
Excuse me, mayor, I need to go to excuse myself and go.
Okay, okay. Anybody have any other questions? All right. Council announcements. Council King?
Starting with me?
Sure.
All right. I'm just wondering if I find people that the Sherwood Main Street will be meeting next Thursday at 8 o'clock over at the, I can't think of the name of the building now. It's left my mind. Not the staff meeting, but the general meeting next, not this Thursday, but next.
Normally at Rebecca Hall.
Or the following Thursday.
It's normally Rebecca Hall.
Rebecca Hall, that's what I was trying to remember. Thank you. And the other thing I just wanted to comment on real quick is, you know, everybody wants to talk about water. But the one thing I can say is that out of all the municipalities in the state, Wilsonville and Sherwood have the most secure water future. And everybody's moving in that direction, including Twelton Valley Water District. And fortunately, we had people who focused on what the future needed to be and what it was going to look like. And this is where we are today. You may not be happy with the rates, but at least you turn your faucet on every morning and water comes out. As opposed to cities in California right now who don't have water. I mean, how much is water worth if you don't have water to flush your toilet and turn the tap on every day? So, you know, we can argue about the cost of what it takes to deliver the water, but the important thing is, is previous council put us on a course to where we will always have water. And frankly, that's probably my, besides that and Snyder Park and a few other things, you know, that I'm really happy about, so. Anyway, I just hope that everybody realizes that, you know, there are people in the world that don't have water every morning when they wake up. And there is a cost. And you can disagree with that, but it takes a lot of money and a lot of planning and a lot of work to deliver that water every day. Thank you, mayor.
Council President Robinson?
Yes, we had a Citizens Advisory Committee at Edie Ridge, and we did have an ice cream social. And Julia and Joe helped serve up the ice cream with me. I, Joe's skills need to be improved in that area.
Forearm strength, forearm.
But nonetheless, it was fun. And I think there's a few more meetings to attend, so please look on the calendar for those future meetings. The council's been very busy interviewing attorneys, and we are hopeful that we will soon conclude that process and have an in-house attorney relatively soon, we hope. And we're taking our time and doing a lot of background checks and interviews. And I'm proud that our council has put so much effort into finding the right person. We have an upcoming Planning Commission meeting on chickens. I'm not sure of the date, Joe. On July 14th, if you're interested in that. And we also have and had our first work session today regarding recreation in our city and how it's, you know, we're learning about how many different pieces there are that are not within one centralized system. And so we're exploring what we have and possible options. And so in our second meeting of the month, I believe, we will continue to have further work sessions on that topic. And we would love it. If you'd like to attend, we welcome you. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Council President. Council King?
I just have a few announcements, but I first would like to reiterate what Counselor King said about water, really briefly. If you ever have a chance to listen to a recent program on NPR regarding water issues in California, it is enlightening and sobering, to say the least. Our council doesn't make decisions lightly where there's a lot of discussion and there's a lot of hard thought that goes into these discussions and decisions. And water is just one of those, among many, really, that we really have a lot of discussion about and a lot of research and a lot of staff time. It's incredible. And I think about six months ago, I would say this is an inordinate amount of time to spend on an issue, but I, over the past six months of being a councillor, I realized that there is never enough time to invest in something as important as playing around with the citizens' money. You just can't spend enough time doing it. And decisions that are made are always going to be approved by some and not approved by others. But rest assured, these are decisions that I, speaking for myself and the rest of council, doesn't make lightly. So I just wanted to let everyone here and in the imaginary audience know that. A couple more fun things, though. As soon as that dog park gets built, there'll be a whole lot of barking going on. And it looks like things are going to start rolling around 1st of August, mid-August. It's only going to take about three to four weeks to get this park built. Make no bones about it. So get your dogs ready, because I think by September, we'll have a few good months for the dogs to be running around without being involved in mud, I'm assuming. So that's exciting. Other things on the parks and recreation front is Phase Two of Woodhaven Park is nearly, if it hasn't been approved, it's nearly approved. It's going through a short plan renewal process. And they'll be going out to bid on that in the wintertime, so sometime in January or February. So look for some action when the next construction season starts on Phase Two of Woodhaven Park, and we'll have that built out. The big news, though, that's coming up is our annual production from the Sherwood Foundation of the Arts, which is Into the Woods. It's going on starting Wednesday, I believe. Shows start at 7:30, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It is hilarious. I saw the junior production of it with our kids a few years ago. This is the longer adult version. This is the longer adult version, and it's basically a play on fairy tales, but it'll be in Stell Olson Park. Lots of fun, so if you've got some time between Wednesday and Saturday, come on out and join the fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Kate. Council Brass?
I first would just like to say or ask for an apology for the conversation that took place up here that resulted in some of the feelings that some of you had that you shared at the table. So please accept my apology on my behalf. I don't have any updates on my assignments. The school board doesn't meet again until August, and then the water consortium doesn't meet until October. But I do have some local updates on some fascinating or fun businesses that will be coming into our community. On Saturday, July 11th, Hungry Heroes will have their grand opening. So if you haven't been in Old Town Sherwood, Alex Wilson will be opening to the public. He has some fabulous desserts that, if you haven't tried his desserts, they're to die for. Other new businesses that are coming, Jalapeno Tacoaria, if you like Mexican food, great place to go. Baja Fresh is coming. Anytime Fitness, Killer Burger. Jersey Mike's is opening on July 22nd, and they've chosen the local YMCA as their benefactor for that week. T-Mobile, their grand opening. And ribbon cutting is August, yeah, August 13th, and they're under new management. 503 Encore, for those of you wine lovers out there, they're moving into the Bank of Oswego Building, so that's pretty exciting. She's expanding her business. And let's see, on the chamber business, the golf outing is the 28th at Merriweather this year. And then on another front, national diabetes, our diabetes nationally is an epidemic, and the local YMCA has received a grant from the YMCA of the USA and the Center of Disease Control to launch the program locally. We're currently operating it out of the Salem YMCA and housed at our facility, but it'll be official program starting in September, so...
Council Brass? I'd like to just, I'd like to interrupt you there for just a moment. I love the announcements of what's going on, but you are actually an employee of the YMCA, so I think it's inappropriate for you to use your position on council to promote them. If you have those announcements to give to another counselor, I think that would probably be a better way to get the information out. All about getting the information out, but just the source of the information should probably not come from an actual employee.
Duly noted. Thank you. Lastly, I won't be here on the council meeting on August 4th. I'll be at a humanitarian project in Columbia, so I will not be in attendance.
On which number, which was that?
August 4th.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council Brass. I also feel very bad that citizens felt that they were put down in any way. I certainly don't ever want the public to feel like they are not welcome. I want the public to come forward. I want to hear your concerns. I want to be able to come up with a solution. Whether I think that a petition that someone brings forward is perfect or not, I'd like to try to work through our issues. I think that working through stuff is the way that we get somewhere. And so I think that if anyone was insulted as your mayor, I would like to apologize on behalf of council, because I don't feel, knowing these councilors, that that was probably the intent, but I can absolutely understand that that could have come across that way. And so I don't ever want someone to feel that way. I want the public to be welcome. It's one of the things that I feel the strongest about. I want to feel that, you know, one of the things that I said at budget, I want to feel like we can disagree without being disagreeable, because that's how we all move forward. We're not always going to agree. That's just not possible, but we can certainly do it in a respectful way. And so I thank council for the lively discussion. I think it absolutely was kept completely cordial, and that's the way it should always be. It's a discussion. Let's talk about stuff. I think it's awesome. So thank you for that, council. I'm just going to kind of give a little very quick report. I had just about the greatest time on July 4th at the Woodhaven Parade. I want to thank and give a shout out to Michelle Graham, who drove me in the mayor's car. She had an awesome convertible that I sat in the back of, and my two children sat down below, and we got to throw candy and ride behind the fire department and the police and all of the Woodhaven community behind us, the kids on the bikes. It's one of my favorite parades, because the kids are always hilarious, and Council Brass was really good about trying to keep the bikes back, which is just about the most challenging job ever, because they always want to be up by the fire truck and the police truck. So it's just fun. That's just fun, and that's what Sherwood community is all about, and so that's why I love it. So thank you to Michelle Graham, and thank you to the Woodhaven community for inviting me. I just want to give a shout out to Special Olympics, which is what we were supporting tonight with the tip of cop. I'll be attending the mayor's bocce ball that kicks off the event. She laughs because it is the great. It's so much fun. And we, as mayors, get invited, but we also get to compete with the Olympians, and it's just a great, great day. And I'm super happy that unlike last year, when it was, I believe, 95, that it's going to be a lot cooler this year. So I'm very, very thankful for that. So everybody, don't forget Robin Hood Festival, not this weekend, but next. Lots and lots of things going on. And Music on the Green begins Wednesday nights, 6:30 to 8:30, starting July 15th. So please come down to Stell Olson Park and enjoy our Music on the Park. That's all I have, Music on the Green, sorry. Music on the Green, I always want to call it Park. That's all I have for tonight. I want to thank you for coming. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
A second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries.